Yes.
I'll ask you after the meeting is over.
Don't give any information.
We will call the Portsmouth School Board Public Meeting Workshop Session Number Four to order on February sixth, two thousand and twenty four. And we, oh, roll call. Liz Barrett. Pip Clues.
Here.
Tish Campbell.
On, I'm here on Zoom.
Carrie Nolte. Brian French.
Here.
Nancy Clayberg.
Here.
Lisa Rappaport.
Is, she's here as an attendee coming in as a panelist shortly.
Hold on. Me. Well. Okay, she.
Lisa Rappaport.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Lee Hudson.
Here.
Aaron Maddow.
Here.
Danielle Miles, Nathan Delaney. Great. Okay. And thank you, Nathan, Patty, and Zach. Uh, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, the next item is public comment. Do we have anyone here for public comment? Do we have anyone on Zoom for public comment?
No one has a hand raised.
Okay. Last thing, anything?
We got one person.
Okay. Please state your name, address, and you have three minutes to talk to the board.
Great, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Clear.
Okay, thank you. Um, my name's Kimberly James. I am a resident in Portsmouth with two young kids in New Franklin School and a third that will join in two years. And I just wanted to speak on behalf of the nature education position in Portsmouth and its value to the community and the school. I am a educator. I've been in education for fifteen years and um, I know the research is pretty clear, but I don't know how often you get to speak to an educator who's worked in a school where nature education has been brought into the classroom and brought teachers out of the classroom. One thing that really sticks out to me from my experience, um, first of all, it wasn't easy to leave my classroom because you know, as a teacher, you're in your room, you have your four walls and it's a comfort zone. Um, but once I was able to go out and bring my students outside with the support of a nature educator and then by myself, I was able to see a huge shift in the dynamics of my classroom. I was able to see students who were quiet become leaders. I was able to see disruptors become problem solvers. And this didn't stop there. It transitioned into everything we did in the classroom after. So I know that while it may seem like a small position, what it gives to the kids and the power it gives them is incredible. So I hope that money can be squeezed in some way to keep this position because its importance to the kids is really, really, um, it's really incredible. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. Do we have anyone else? Matt, on Zoom?
No, nobody's raising their hands.
Okay, we'll call the public comment. Section of the meeting closed. Now we do the um, meeting, Zach.
Yeah, so um, we previously had been asked uh, to provide some additional information on uh, mental health and uh, generally kind of what are some of the things that are being done in connection to emotional well-being uh, in the district? Uh, so we had uh, building level teams work on uh, giving you uh, some staff of what we're doing in terms of staffing connected to this stuff. What we're doing uh, if you're uh, using outside resources uh, as part of things, what were programs that are inside of each building that are set up to try to address uh, mental health and emotional wellness and then ultimately positive practices? What are some things that are uh, intertwined with what's, you know, other uh, while not a program that's a set alone? Um, what are some of those practices? Before we spend some time and we'll take some of your questions around uh, these things, I I also asked um, Rick uh, Matty to come back and join us um, tonight. Well, Rick's still learning our district and in our operation. Uh, his professional experience before, now he's many years into being a special education administrator, but prior to that period of time, Rick was a school psychologist. Uh, and I think understands a lot of the different types of roles that are in districts and the differences between those roles and how they, how they work together around um, student mental health uh, and wellness. And so I asked uh, Rick if he'd be willing to come and just talk a little bit broadly about some of those positions. Because there's a lot of, what we generally find is outside of the schools, there's a lot of um, people have a lot of questions about what does a school psychologist do and not do? And where's the line between that person and the counselor and then what's the role of a, of a teacher and the other staff in the building when it comes to these types of issues? So I was hoping that Rick would have an opportunity to speak.
Hello, Rick.
Hello, Nancy. Nice to be here. Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to all of you tonight and um, yeah, our mental health services. As I learned the district, I've been here about eight months. But as I learn more and more about Portsmouth, it's very similar to other districts I've, I've worked in. And there really is a continuum of services when you talk about mental health support or when we talk about that. There's substantial mental health support for all students provided through the school counseling department. So if a student has a, a more of an acute challenge at home or has something they need to talk about, the school counseling staff is there bell to bell to help address those concerns for all kids. All the students in our buildings at all developmental levels, elementary, middle, and high school. We also have um, a social worker and we all do, not all of us, but a fair amount of our mental health staff do a fair amount of social work. And that's working with families around accessing our agency services that provide mental health. So there's a fair amount of outreach to families that could use that social work and social direction in our community. Then as Zach mentioned, we have school psychologists. Those are, that's um, a pretty specialized service that would require parental consent and be part of a student's educational plan. So it would be part of an typically a part of an individual education plan. And a student would receive specialized counseling via the school psychologist. And that would again go through the IEP team and um, parental consent would be absolutely needed for that service. Whereas things like school counselor, it's not necessarily parental consent because it's a service available to all students. School nursing, believe it or not, is a place where we were, we were talking about this today, a fair amount of emotional support happens. Frankly, we've measured the number of visits at the school nurse and sometimes more than fifty percent of those visits are more emotionally support related. So our school nurses are also providing um, mental health support to our students when needed. Um, so really, yeah, school counselors, social workers, school psychologists, school nurses, those are all important factors in providing mental health services to the students in our district.
Rick, can you tell a little bit about um, one of the things that some principals uh, had here was um, talked about BCBAs. Sure. What BCBAs and what BCBAs' role is in a school district?
Yep. BCBAs' role in a school district generally is to be, I would say, the behavior experts for our classrooms and our playgrounds and lunchrooms, you know, generally our school environments. And our BCBAs are the experts around why children behave the way they do. And here in Portsmouth and in other districts I've worked with, the BCBAs really lead, lead the, lead the district charge in training staff on emotional deregulation. So how do we de-escalate challenging emotional situations rather than accidentally or unknowingly or even well-intended and intentioned escalating the situation? We really have strategic instruction to help our staff avoid meltdowns with students and actually give them positive choices to get out of those situations. And our BCBAs are leading that, that training throughout the district.
Back to school psychologists for a second. So you, you talked about direct service from school psychologists to students. Is that, if you're a school psychologist, is that the primary, is that the only role you're serving?
Yeah.
In schools as you're coming in and providing direct service?
Definitely not. Um, counseling is part of what a school psychologist does. Another very important part are the specialized assessments that they do. They do cognitive assessments where they measure a student's, um, you know, cognitive ability and compare it to their academic achievement via standardized tests. They also um, in some ways measure social emotional development through teacher inherent rating scales. So a big part of the job is, is doing specialized assessments for students with disabilities. And jumping back to BCBAs, not only do they, not only are they leaders for um, behavior in our district, but they also do a fair amount of individual work with students where they write behavior plans when they're needed. And then they work with teachers to consult on how that behavior plan can be implemented, implemented in the classroom. And then they monitor and then hopefully step away and kind of help the next case. So that's roughly a general idea of how our BCBAs and school psychs work, Zach.
Um, the, and I know we have Tish with a question already. At some point, we wanted to talk, have Patty talk a little bit about Character Strong, which is the S E S curriculum that's already been adopted. So I don't know if people would, how, how you perceive it.
Uh, why don't we finish the presentation first and then we'll take questions?
Great.
All right, Tish, did you hear that?
Yes, I did. Totally fine.
Rose and Lee second, but let's finish the presentation.
So we, a year ago, um, uh, the district had been looking for a uh, uh, character slash social emotional curriculum uh, to utilize and, and I'll Patty talk a little bit about that.
So you would, it, those of you who are on the board last year, remember the presentation from Chris Burke talking about Character Strong moving away from um, I believe it was open classroom and adopting that. And since that meeting, the teachers have um, gone through all the training for Character Strong, the lessons for Character Strong, which basically fall into three categories. And I pulled up the website just to help me remember. There's three different areas that the students cover. It's be kind, be strong, be well. And they cover things on a monthly sort of cycle. There's a theme for the month and the months can be arranged in any way that you want. So something like gratitude might fall in November because it coincides nicely with Thanksgiving. But there are different characteristics that are covered and students in varying ways across the three different elementary schools will be introduced to the concept, have a mini lesson at, at some point in the week and revisit that multiple times during the week. So things like respect, responsibility, gratitude, honesty, empathy, cooperation, courage, perseverance, creativity. So all of those different concepts are woven throughout the year that the students from kindergarten through grade five have um, different uh, mini lessons and different activities around those. The middle school, as was listed on the sheet that you received in your packet, is going to be putting this into place for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Middle school appropriate, obviously. So the lessons are going to be age appropriate, developmentally appropriate. The high school is also looking at continuing the work with Character Strong and using a piece of that during advisory. Um, so that the students could get to know each other better, especially as you're bringing together multiple different districts, students from different schools who have never worked together or met each other before. So those are the kinds of things that they're covering in Character Strong.
There's a, there's a lot of other things in here. One other thing I'll mention that gets a lot of attention and, and uh, was something that we had a little bit of a concern about at one point was uh, therapy ducks. Uh, therapy dogs is a newer, um, a newer thing uh, in the district started uh, at New Franklin was our first one, right? Utah at uh, at New Franklin. Uh, and um, and these, the dogs are certified. Um, they go through, through training with uh, with their uh, person. Uh, and um, and so we have had to develop a, um, we have a, we have a um, policy uh, connected with therapy dogs uh, here in the school district. We've, we have, we had, we had at one point had to have a conversation with Primex, our insurance carrier, to make sure that we fully understood um, what the liabilities might be in connection with that. But I will say that it was, and during that period of time, we put up, we put a pause on therapy dogs for a couple of weeks and we were getting pa, yeah, I'm not, it's lies. Pause. Uh, and uh, and I would say that there was, uh, there was definitely um, uh, I don't know if I called it outcry. There, there was just a lot of people who were like, oh, my God, I wear the ducks, one of the ducks coming back. Um, uh, and uh, and used as part of those, uh, part of those uh, counseling services in some cases as rewards for kids, but other times around, um, helping kids de-escalate in situations where they're emotionally elevated. And um, the use of the dog can, can come in real handy. All that's through with uh, parent permission, uh, of course. So um, there's a lot of other things in here. We're happy to take, happy to take your questions. I know people have some questions and we'll do the best we can. Um, and some stuff we might have to get back to you on if, if it's beyond, you know.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's start with Tish. Tish, you have the floor.
Okay, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
We got you.
Oh, okay. Um, so going back, I'm just wondering if there's any data of um, how many students are first recognized as having an emotional or mental um, concern by going to either a school psycho, uh, psychologist or a nurse?
We definitely don't, I, we don't have any data to give you tonight and I don't know to what extent we tissue, like you, let me just rephrase the question to make sure I, I understand. So how often are our students identified via a nurse or a school psychologist is having an emotional disability?
Oh, yes. I actually, you worded it um, better than I did. Thank you.
Or a mental health concern.
Or a mental.
Or mental health concern, yes.
Yeah, it might not go all the way to the level of being identified as having an emotional disability.
Right, right. The nurse, uh, the concern is much more realistic and probably frequent than a referral for special ed. Um, I typically would think that, you know, the, the student's teacher or parent, but it certainly could come from a nurse or from a school psychologist, um, that sort of thing. But I, I think um, definitely concerns, concerns are brought forth to nurses in school.
Yeah, I think, I think too, the one thing to keep remembering is that a school psychologist
is very different than an outside psychologist. A school psychologist is looking at measuring learning capabilities, learning abilities, things like that. It's not necessarily going to be having counseling sessions with students. So when you hear psychologist, you have to think more from the terms of educational psychology instead of psychology that we think about when we think about mental health support. So it to support what Rick is saying, you're going to probably encounter that more frequently in a nurse's office or a teacher or a school counselor or a parent might come in with that, but we don't have hard, fast numbers on that.
Okay, um, thank you. And I, I just have one more question, if that's okay. Um, in regard to the BCBAs, are they only working with kids with IEPs? Are they working with students um, in any de-escalating type um, situation?
They work with all kids. Not exclusively students on IEPs. They work with all students.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Yes.
Can I, can I make the observation that our justification for having them has generally been driven by IEPs and behavior plans and students with identified need? One of the benefits of hiring BCBAs and having them on staff as opposed to contracting to bring them in for limited hours is that
Yeah.
we now have them as a resource in the district and so they service all of our kids when we have needs, not just identified kids whose IEPs dictate that there's something to be addressed. Is that fair?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Lee.
So I'm confused. In the previous data that we've had, I've seen only one BCPA at point six FTE, right? In, in terms of the data so far that you've shared with us. Was that the, the scrolling? Yep. So it should be my, by building. So we, so, so some of this was principals reported on that form by building. Um, but the, I mean, we have two BCBAs and I, and they were allocated and it's a good catch. The um, they're alloc, they service, they, they kind of split the district. And so the breakup is
Point six in some places, but together the FTE is two full-time people for the entire district.
Okay, so one person is split between
Darrow for, I don't know exactly, but let's say, for example, point six is at Don Darrow. Or sorry, point six could be at Little Harbor. And then they round out the rest of their point for other places in the district.
Okay, but between those two, they split the whole district.
Yeah.
Okay, so it was a mistake in the way in which, and that's part of the challenge of having multiple parties add into the I guess, I get it.
So, so we've got two full-time people.
Yeah.
And what's, what's their caseload look like, if you don't mind me asking?
I'd have to really look, lead it to say, you know, exactly.
Fifty people each? Are we talking just a rough number?
You know, I don't know how many behavior plans they have each. I, I can tell you that um, we trained, they trained, both of them, about a hundred paraprofessionals in CPI training.
Yeah.
That was a
I was gonna say, what, in what CPI?
Yeah, CPI is, is crisis prevention, crisis prevention intervention. So it's basically techniques to avoid emotional escalation and meltdowns.
Yeah.
And my focus with them has really been around behavior training and professional development for staff.
Okay.
I could certainly go back and ask them about their caseloads.
How much of it is behavior management? Because this is another thing I'd like to understand. How much of it is behavior management versus those children that have IEPs that need support and figuring out the approach to learn? Right? That's really what a BCPA is supposed to be for, is not necessarily just de-escalation and behavior management, but actually defining and helping support staff to educate people appropriately. Right? And so from that perspective, I'm trying to understand or get a better picture of how two people are managing a caseload, whatever that caseload is. And I'd like to understand that and how much of that's behavior management versus helping support.
Sure, I could, I could come back with some information about that.
Yeah, thanks. Appreciate it. I mean, traditionally, you know, BCA, BCBAs have three, I think it's in three buckets. I mean, they've got some direct service. In the best situations, they're not doing tons and tons of direct service. You know, they're, so they're doing some direct service to kids. Uh, typically, that's when we're, we're struggling as an institution and we, so we're bringing in our best, our very best people to kind of usually to get a plan rolling and then model it for other staff to then take over. The idea is that we, we only have these, these two people at this level of expertise. You don't want to, when possible, I mean, you got to spread them out. And, and so, so you've got the direct service piece. You've got the, the creation of plans. So when there is a, is an issue, and it could be kind of straight behavioral, uh, like a kid is um, student is struggling to keep them, their hands to themselves or running out of the classroom, those types of things, but also could be just like they're having, they're struggling within the classroom to what you're talking about. They're, they're um, struggling to um, to be, to uh, approach that experience in a way that allows them to access to learn. So that's, you got, you got that happening. And then the, the last piece of that, of that three tends to be training. So here are these people that have a certain amount of expertise. So what Rick was talking about, you know, the, I think, Rick, when we talked about it was like all paraprofessional, professionals got that first tier of CPI training, which is around de-escalation. And then it was a targeting and as we move on, it will be the targeting of folks who actually are in situations with some students that will, could require uh, more than verbal uh, de-escalation. Uh, and then that's the next kind of
That's the next smaller group.
So it's, so ideally what's happening with, with BCBAs when, when we're really functioning at our best is they're coming in, they're analyzing, they're doing the work to analyze what's happening and why it's not working. They're developing the plan. They're working with the team to, to kind of talk about what is the plan and what is each different person's role inside of that plan? And then they're helping us to some extent monitor those plans. Um, and that's how we get the biggest bang for the buck out of those people and trying to maximize their expertise. But there are times when we're really challenged, where we might have some, a BCPA for a short period of time directly involved with a student. But that means, once we do that, right, we're, we're taking them off of those other two buckets that we really need to maximize, uh, maximize what they can bring to us. So, but we can get you some data around, around some of that stuff.
Well, and, and part of the reason I ask, just, just so I give a little bit of background of why I'm asking, right, from studies from an autistic perspective.
Absolutely.
And that the challenges that they have from a behavioral perspective often are frustration around education and accessing that education. And it sounds like we're actually being reactive versus proactive, or it's, at least that's the way you presented. And I apologize, I may, may have misunderstood a little bit. But it was more about, let's, let's address the behavior as opposed to, let's address the academic plan and the approach for individualized education such that they actually have better access and don't get to the point where they're frustrated in the first place.
Absolutely.
So at any rate, it, it's part of something that I'm just, I'm, I'm interested in how best help the children.
And I think, go ahead, you, you know. I was just gonna say, you know, I, my experience in my career, my first was connected, when, when BCBAs first started to appear. It was, it was in, within districts where I saw where um, where uh, schools were trying to improve how they were dealing with autistic students. That was like, that was where BCBAs came from. That's what the, that's when I first started to see for me in my career. That's when I first started to have those conversations. It would be at a table uh, around an IEP and a BCPA would be connected with that if a student was on the spectrum and we were trying to work through exactly what you're talking about. Um, you know, a particular student uh, gets frustrated with the, the way in which a teacher is instructing or something that's happening with their peers. And then that leads to some type of um, acting out from the frustration. So then it's like, okay, how are we gonna, how are we adjusting? Um, how are we adjusting things for that particular student inside of the, inside of the classroom? What is the teacher doing? How, how's the teacher thinking differently about what they're doing? Um, what are we doing to manage, it's not just one student in the classroom, a bunch of students to try to get them all to be in a position where they can uh, they can work through those things. So, so I think that's very much true. And then simultaneously, it had, we also, you know, with students who, who do have the hitting, the kicking, the, just not able to function in classroom, we use that expertise uh, as well. Got you. Yeah, thank you. You're welcome.
Oh, Tish. Oh, just any, oh, all right, let's do Tish first and then we'll, go ahead. Tish?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Lisa.
Oh, my hand wasn't up. I don't think.
Thanks, Lisa.
Hi, um, is my audio okay?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have two questions and they're a little bit big picture, but my interest in asking about our mental health resources was kind of two things. One is that we had our high school wellness club come in and talked to the board last fall and they said that about half of kids in the high school don't speak up when they need help. And so I guess I'm trying to understand based on that, if you think there's any areas where we need more resources and whether that has any budget implications or whether you think we need to communicate options? Or like, instead of waiting for them to reach out to us, check in with them more proactively? So I guess I'm just wondering, you know, to the extent that we're trying to address that how and whether we need any resources to do it?
So, so I would say, and I'll let, I think my colleagues jump in after. One of the things, um, I think I talked about this and and some of this is, there's some regulatory challenges in New Hampshire, but I, I think it's worth exploring. So uh, in Vermont, one of the things that we were running on a pretty regular basis was we were using a social emotional screener with kids, uh, and this was grades three through twelve. So we had a very good um, sense of individual students and where they were at in terms of their kind of emotional development and if they were struggling. Um, we also had the ability to, based on those responses, to kind of triangulate, looking at attendance data, uh, looking at uh, grades and whether grades had changed, uh, to really be thoughtful about being able to identify through multiple, you know, looking at multiple pieces of data, um, students that might be in crisis. Uh, and then having teams come together to then plan around those kids. I think right now, we do not, we do not have uh, that type of screener and there are challenges in New Hampshire. And there are challenges in New Hampshire where parents have the op- there's a um, a more uh. Uh, there's more conversation has to happen with parents about their, whether or not they're willing to have their students participate uh, in that type of practice. But I would say that when we on an annual basis would develop uh, action plans for the district. The um, we almost always had one academic goal for the year. Uh, and one um, goal that was around our our students uh, uh, sense of kind of personal uh, emotional well-being. Uh, and right now, here in Portsmouth, we have, we get pockets of of snapshots of what's going on. With like a YRBS uh, survey, but that doesn't give us individual student data. Um, we, we don't have a systemic way of looking at all of our students. And what the needs of all of our students may be in this realm. And so I think a thing to explore, and as we move into the the next tier of strategic planning. Is um, whether or not coming out of that, it um, whether it's personalized learning or a safe learning environment. That people come to the conclusion that this is a tool that we need. Uh, as part of what we're doing and part of how we're trying to address our students. Because right now, as an institution, we're really flying in the dark a lot about what is happening for individual kids. And so we wait, we we don't wait, we just, we don't know when to um, engage with intervention. Uh, as cleanly as other places I've worked. Um, and very often, we sometimes we have to wait for a crisis to arrive before we start saying, well, what institutionally can we do? To address the needs of um, a particular student who may, who may be not just in crisis, but lower level, just struggling. Um, having a hard time, feeling disaffected, not feeling connected in school. Uh, not feeling um, that they have friends, they're connected to other people, that type of thing. So I think that is something that is gonna be, I I hope is gonna, is gonna happen. That conversation about weighing that, I hope is gonna happen in in one of those two strategic planning groups. Um, and my hope would be that we thoughtfully think about how we could, we could do that here uh, in our district.
That's really helpful, and I think it makes sense to consider that as part of strategic planning. Um, I guess I would also be curious, as we're having those conversations, if there's ways that we can just have more touchpoints with kids. Because I think if we do wait for them, especially at the upper grades, to voluntarily walk into counseling. You're not gonna get everybody that way. So I'd be curious if we're exploring that conversation, how we can sort of opt them in instead of waiting for them to come to us. If people think that that's productive. Um, and then I guess my other question is sort of related, but not quite the same thing, which is just anecdotally. There's been a lot of what I guess we would say spicier behavior each year at the middle school over the last few years. And just a lot more not great, you know, behavior, not great respect for classmates. You know, I just got an email from the Expo seventeen today, reminding parents to talk to their kids about best ways to treat classmates. And it seems to keep coming up. So I guess I just wondered, for that piece, is there more we can do in the middle school and are there resources we need there?
So the, you know, I I think what's gonna, what's gonna be interesting is as we move, we take character strong. Uh, and as character, as we're developing it in the in the elementaries, as we start to then fold that, roll that out. Um, in the upper grades. Um, I think that's gonna be, I think that's gonna be super important, that we that we continue to have this conversation. And you think about, you think about it in terms of how we thought, how what came forward in the portrait of graduate process. Over and over again, in survey stuff and in focus groups, were what were parents, or a lot of parents saying and staff saying. We we, yes, we want academic achievement, we want to create good humans um, as uh, as a system. And uh, and I think you can try to do that uh, through happenstance, or you can try to do it by design. And I think there's some, I think there's some work that we need to do, character strong being part of that, as we move up, that move that into the middle grades and then. Oh, um, that's gonna help us do that, but we have to have an on, I I think a thoughtful, ongoing conversation about what does it mean to be a good human? Um, and have that be part of like really curriculum. Um, and that can be challenging at times, there are people who will bristle up uh, about that. But I think most people want their kids to be polite, they want their kids to be thoughtful, they want their kids to hold doors for people, they want their kids to. Um, to do those sorts of things, and I think that's something that we, we need to um. I think a portrait of graduate shows is something that we need to uh, to plan and design around.
Okay, so it sounds like for both questions, basically, as we do strategic planning, there might be a budget question around this. Maybe next year and future years, but not right now. Is that fair?
Well, you'll in the, in the, I'll I'll say that in the, we have an opportunity to preview uh, some some budget. Proposal options for you towards the tail end of this meeting, that will, that will be, you know, that includes um, includes some assistance in that, in that arena. Um, but it will not include some of the things I just mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
And Byron.
Um, actually, my first question, or Lisa's first question was very similar to my first question. Um, I was thinking about that same research that we had, where kids hadn't felt comfortable going, they did said they didn't have someone to go to. Um, and so I'm wondering, um, I I think you already answered it, but is there any? Is there any outreach from counselors at all at the high school level? Um, you said, or I guess we have them in all schools, but particularly at the high school level to the to the students, or is that only?
I I'll I'll have to, I would, uh, let me just come, let me go and see, come back. Additional information about how do we do, how do we do outreach from our counseling department?
Okay, and I know, um, I think if I'm not, if I understood this right, the advisory, the new advisory setup was. Supposed to be a way to create that touchpoint for the students at the high school level.
Yeah, advisor, I mean, advisory programs in general, like, you know, are designed to give you. Uh, I can think of a lot of places where we were doing, we were doing like organizational improvement work. And one of the things we started with, I've done this multiple times, was where we took, I was at high schools. And we took the names, we took every single kid in the in the school. And we put around the, around the room, we had these big poster papers with all the different kids' names alphabetically. And then everybody was given sticky dots. And uh, and what the, and as a staff member, they said, okay, if you put a dot beside any kid who you know what they, what their average school activity is. If they have siblings, and if they, you know, whatever, these couple of things. And in all, in many of those situations, what, you know, what, at the end of the day, you saw all these dots around certain kids. And then just like, and people were embarrassed, the sea of kids that didn't have a dot. Uh, and um, and so, you know, I know in two of those different, in two of those different situations, one of the um, things that the the plan was, was to move into advisories. And the idea being that you've got your core group for four years, you're kind of, you know, you're a family. You might like all those people, you might not, but you've got a crew that you're with, and you've got a teacher, as long as that teacher is there for four years. You've got a a teacher or staff member who you're with for that whole period of time, and that you kind of go through together. And I think that's part of the, that's that's al- that's always been the promise of advisories, at least you have, like in a big high school. You have the ability to kind of have your kind of home group uh, that you're gonna be with. Now, in terms of data, you know, I think the, I know the high school has been in the course of like, there's been constant ref- attempt to kind of refine. That, you know, what's going on with that, what's going on with the, they have flex block where kids can go, they can go out and get extra help during that period of time, they can. They can go to, sometimes they've got some club activities they're involved in. Um, but that has been, I think there's been a long history of kind of tweaking that. Uh, long before we got here, there's always been these like, these stories about what the people want that time to be.
And advisory is gonna get more organized, you can see in the list, more organized next year, when Character Strong comes on. And now there's sort of nuclear sort of center concepts or discussions we'll be having. And things will build off of that, so it'll be more focused and more organized, I guess. So that maybe students will feel that they're able to surface things that they're concerned about or things that are happening.
And I've seen a lot of places that, as they, as they try to improve their advisories, another thing that places do. And again, we are not in these conversations right now. Um, but restorative practices, some sort of justice and utilization of uh, of circles as part of. Uh, as part of those advisories, uh, super powerful uh, stuff. Um, that is not, as far as I know, that is not part of the conversation right now uh, at the high school, but definitely.
That's happening at Lister, so that is happening at Lister, so that they're, they've got the smaller group of kids, but they're using those. And so there's a lot of things going on across the district. Making sure we don't, you know, lose track of our kids.
But but I think there is a, um, again, it goes back to, to what extent do, do we put? Social emotional well-being of our students on the same, or we putting it on the same tier as academic achievement? Um, and I, and um, and are we doing that as an institution, or are we just relying on? Teachers to just be good people and just kind of figure it out informally on their own. Um, and I think we've got, we've done some good things, but I think there's room to grow in terms of, as an institution, us. Us really valuing that and designing around that, which also will mean over the longer term. Um, but you know, doing some additional budgeting around that too, so.
Um, my next question was um, about the school nurses, and you mentioned that they're responsible for a good portion of. Of intervention with mental health concerns. Um, do they receive the same kind of training? Well, actually, I guess I'm not, it's not the CPI training I'm thinking of. But do they receive any training in dealing with emotional wellness?
That's a great question, Pip. Um, and my example about mental health and school nursing really came from a previous district. I don't, and I probably shouldn't have mentioned it, because I don't have a good measure of school nursing in Portsmouth at this time. Um, but my experience in, actually. Two of the districts that I worked in for several years, um, I worked with school nurses. And they had a fair amount of, they provided a fair amount of 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 mental health support in school nurse's office.
So there's also.
We we measured it one year, that that's why I threw.
And there's also some of the, just the emotional sort of being there. I mean, I was walking through schools today and two students, I need to see the nurse, the nurse isn't there, what's going on? Oh, I've got this thing on my leg, oh, I've got, you know, my elbow, well, maybe you can come, and sometimes it's just to check in, it's another adult to check in with. So that's the other kind of support that they're providing, is just there's another adult who I can check in with, who will see that I'm okay. So it's not necessarily training, because heaven knows the nurses have all kinds of training that they have to go to. Um, but it's it's just being another, another adult, another touchpoint for them to sort of feel like, okay, somebody else can. And sometimes it is the boo-boo for the phantom, you know, paper cut that might be there, and it's it's okay, I mean, they need that.
It does seem like it would be valuable, though, for them to to be equipped with how to handle those things. If especially if they are a safe person to go to.
Right.
Um, that makes sense, uh, I I know it's the only reason my kid's ever in the nurse's office. Um, uh, and then I just, you your comment about um, the therapy dogs reminded me that I, that of an email that we got. I think it was, I don't know what day it came in, but um, from one of our speech language pathologists about the outdoor, the nature-based program. And how that has just really transformed the lives of some of our kids who get special. Uh, or who who don't, you know, who have different learning styles or who have needs that can be met in a different setting. Um, and I think, I think therapy dogs are similar, you know, it's like pressures off when you're with a dog versus a teacher, you know. Um, and so I'm just, I just wanted to say my piece one more time about that, that program. I think it serves so many of our kids in so many different ways, and I'd love to see if we can find a way to to keep it. Um, because as as other people mentioned, this was one of our priorities long before the pandemic. And we were, you know, just ramping it up, or just getting, just trying, trying for years to get it on the budget or into the budget. And we finally did. We pointed out, not technically in our budget, but um, but we finally got the program started, and I think it would be a shame to let it go.
Thank you, Pip. Byron?
Thanks, Nancy. Yeah, one of the things that jumped out at me looking at the, um, in the packet was um. The wide variety, especially in the elementary schools, of different types of practices that are there. Um, and I think that's, so there's two sides of that, I think it's hurting to see all those things, and the other side seems. Extremely difficult to understand the effectiveness of any of that. Um, because it's it's bit of a soup in terms of like what's what's there. Um, and so to your point about, you know, in your previous district having, you know, one goal around academics. One goal around mental health. Um, yeah, and as we move into strategic planning, you think the goal part of that is good, like the other part of that coin too is. How are we measuring against those goals? And it seems if we have like such varied uh, practices, measurement becomes hard. So that's just sort of an observation of the current state of things and some of the goals we have moving forward. So love to see, yeah, as we move into um, the strategic planning, measurements against those goals. Um, you know, in your your comments, we don't know when to engage in intervention, we have to wait until a crisis arrives. Those seems like um, pretty bad states to be in.
Yes.
Um, so I'd love to find ways to measure against getting out of those states, so.
Agreed, I I think, you know, I think anytime. Um, you know, I'm I'm used to with new initia- new initiatives, um, us establishing. Criteria for success in the front end, you know, what are those, what are those KPIs, you know, and and how are we? How um, how often are we checking in on those and what should be the trajectory of of where those things are going? Um, and uh, and so we do have, well, in a lot of places, I think there's a, there's a tendency towards uh. Had a principal refer to it as cardiac assessment, feel at my heart. Uh, and uh, you know, a lot of anecdotes about particular success stories and and those types of things. Um, but we, and this is a lot of places, it's not unique to here. Um, we we don't always, there are examples where we do have good data, but there's there's times where we don't necessarily. And we haven't established, and again, we haven't established what that criteria for success is on the front end of the creation of something. Uh, and so I do think it's something that we need to be really thoughtful about as we go forward in strategic planning for sure. Uh, and then also, you know, being pushed around some of these things, and how how do we know it is successful or not, and what can we point to? Um, and of course, the challenge is, is once you have something in motion, if you haven't already determined what success looks like. There's a, there's a real tendency, even of the the most honest and authentic group of people, to be moving the goalposts around a little bit. To try to come to certain outcomes. Uh, and um, so uh, so yeah, so a point well taken, and I think it's definitely something we need to really concentrate on. As we develop those couple of um, important, whatever those important initiatives are gonna be coming out of strategic planning, has to be grounded in. How are we gonna know if this is working?
Thank you, Byron. Anyone else? Um, I just have a question about, um, during COVID, we we noted that the social emotional. Be, you know, well-being of our students decreased, you know, just by the fact that they were in their rooms all day long. Have we seen an improvement in that? Is there any way to measure that?
Uh, and you know, the the things that I I would tell you would be, would go back to anecdotal stuff, right? I don't have a, uh, and and this goes back to not having a a means, we we don't really have a dipstick. For our students in general around these issues. Uh, and so I think, again, that becomes really important, if we're gonna make um, any types of big moves in this arena. Uh, to do so based on going back to card, you know, card anecdotal, a few anecdotes. When we make a big programmatic decision around things in this area, I think that's a, that's the wrong move. So I do, I do think that the starting point is trying to, trying to get a better read, so I can answer you very quickly. With what, in my last district, district, I'd be in a position to say, well, Nancy, uh, you know, what we can, what we, what we saw was in our spring. You know, from our um, our spring um, panorama survey data, we got X, Y, and Z, and kids are up ten percent. In this area, at it, since we've done it in fall, um, we've seen this go down a little bit. But I could speak to specifically what was going on, what we were seeing, and how kids are self-reporting, how they were doing. Um, and I don't have that data uh, here, and uh, so I do think something's really important.
And then I was just gonna ask, when do we do that youth risk behavior survey again? Isn't that like every?
So that's every two years, and they just did it last year. And part of the hiccup with that is it's not our survey, it's not local, the data has to be sent out, and it's gotta be crunched, and we've gotta wait for it to come back. I don't know that we've even still gotten it back, and then it's every two years, so it would be twenty-five, so next spring-ish. They do it.
Is that, that's just high school, correct?
That's just high school, yep.
And then I just have another question, I am very impressed with the list. And then I just have another question. I am very impressed with the list of community agencies that we collaborate with. Um, I mean, that's, that's a lot of agencies that we're involved with and uh, congratulations, because I don't ever remember that being, uh, lengthy and effective. Um, are there any other agencies or programs that you think we could get? So I'm sure you're on the radar for that.
So we've actually, I've actually been in conversation by email with our district social worker who's trying to get her hands around what else is out there that we might be missing. So she's going to be organizing a meeting and sending out some invitations just to see who's out there, who we're already working with, what they do, what we might be missing that they could offer, those kinds of things. It's, it's it's an ever-changing landscape. So we're trying to get our hands around that.
Okay, um, I think that's, oh, oh, Lisa, Lisa, you're next.
Thank you. I guess I just have a quick observation, but as I'm taking this in, I'm curious about to what extent we are going to look at mental health or emotional health as we're thinking about whether our policies and procedures around grading or attendance or discipline are aligned with what our goals are for students around this. I think we've heard from parents periodically about things like what is our cell phone policy or what is our you know, policy around, you know, missing work and grading and a whole bunch of other things. So I guess I'm just curious, are we going to be able, as we're doing strategic planning, to think about how our goals for supporting emotional health trickle through, I guess, academics and just how we're running the schools day to day beyond just counseling.
Yeah. And I don't know. So for example, let's say, uh, you know, you can drill down to the level of, of say, missing assignments. And how should that, what type of impact should that have on a student's, um, you know, final grade in a class and, and you have this tug a- around. You know, you have these two different, these two different, um, it, well, let me, let me say that, I, I don't know if I totally agree with this being like a, uh, an either or scenario, but people will get into an argument about you know, responsibility and we need to teach kids life skills connected to hard work and responsibility and, and have accountability. Uh, those types of things. And then on the other side is, and kids are kids and people are people and they make mistakes. And so I think there's a healthy conversation to be had in there, um, around, um, you know, where is that, where is that tipping point? In terms of our overall goals, because we still do have academic goals that are in there. And I don't think they're, you know, I, I think it's possible to, to do both, but I think there is a rich conversation to be had with the social emotional needs of students kind of having a, a, a bit more weight than maybe traditionally it's had in the district. Um, it, when it does come into conflict with that other good, which is around academic achievement. But I don't know that that's going to be totally solved through strategic planning. I think those are, that's going to be a ongoing, I think strategic planning, both through the portrait and then through, and through identifying some action steps that are important will kind of, uh, paint the way for folks as to what we value. And then those conversations are then going to be uh, they're not going to all happen in a strategic planning meeting. They're going to be at policy committee, talking about what is our policy in relation to certain types of uh, work or expectations or those types of things. It's going to be in, um, disciplinary hearings when we decide to what extent are we giving someone another break or, uh, providing uh, additional support. Let's say it's around, um, drug-related activity. Like there's a conversation to be had around, um, around addiction, around, um, social emotional wellness of students that turn to drug use and the, the potential impact of, of students who are connected with drugs could have on the rest of the student body and or creating, uh, a frame of, um, uh, also, you know, also declaring as a, as a community through the schools that certain types of uh, drug behavior are inappropriate. I mean, there's, there's like, this is, there's, that's one area. But I think it's going to be all kinds of little conversations that will have a tether back to declaring our values through the full str- strategic planning process, but I don't know that it'll all be resolved through strategic planning.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Anyone else? We.
Think so. All right, we are. Um, do we have, do we have time to preview the suggestions?
I was just going to say that. I think that would be awesome if we could do that.
Okay, let me, uh.
Thank you, everyone.
So, um, give me just a minute.
And the lights. Oh, yes. So we've got, you know.
Have any music, but, um.
Musacan. Go ahead, go for it. Grab a microphone. We've got multiple extra microphones.
Bring some line items, Lawrence.
But the, um, presentation was great, um, that you made with these suggestions.
Yeah. In a Microsoft.
Uh, you want me to do it?
No, I think I got it.
I can serve it up.
I think I got it. I think I got it. It was a little creaky to get there, but it's, um.
I don't know what my password is.
Got it. Almost got it. All right, Nathan, why don't you do it?
Slideshow over the top. Put a slideshow at the top.
Oh, wait, that's your screen, not mine.
I'm shared. Go ahead. Go on here on, well, I can go here.
Yeah, go there to share.
Yeah. Oh, there we go. Got it. You know, good.
I'm going to go sit over here so I can.
Okay.
Right corner too, yeah.
Um, okay, so coming out of, at the, the, the end of the, our last session here, um, we, uh, we had a conversation with, um, uh, Nancy and Brian about, about how to, could we present some options that showed kind of some prioritization on our part and what, what would we feel, uh, as a team in a discussion with, with principals and directors? Um, where we would go, you're going to be adding additional stuff beyond the proposal, if you're going to subtract some things, basically create a, a menu of options that you are not locked into, but maybe could help, um, help, uh, direct some thinking and get us kind of more focused on a couple of different ideas. So, um, so, um, this is the one that we originally presented to you, uh, was, um, a continuing, what, what we refer to as a continuing uh, service budget. Uh, ultimately it led to a five point three nine percent, uh, increase. Uh, it was what we were proposing and a reduction in, um, for four, one, four hundredths of a, of a, uh, F T E. So basically flat F T Es. Um, and, um, that was the original, uh, proposal last night. Uh, this is, this is what happened. The, um, the city council formally, uh, gave guidance, uh, to the departments. Uh, and, uh, part of that is anticipation, I think of the fact, knowing that we are coming close to our conclusion, fire, police are coming close to their conclusion. And they wanted to be on record saying this is what we are asking of the city manager for the overall budget for the city. Um, so two city council in, um, introduced a motion, uh, ultimately what the city decided to, um, they set about a range from three and a half to four and a half. Ultimately, what was voted on, I believe was a, was a four and a half, uh, percent, um, overall, uh, increase is what they want to see um, from the city as a whole and no additional positions unless other positions are given up in order to, uh, compensate. Now, we have had a healthy, uh, conversation here, uh, before with some members about what, to what extent should the board, for the board feel, uh, beholden to those guidelines? Um, and, um, and to what extent, if there's a desire to advocate to do more um, than what is, uh, laid out, should the board push and advocate for those things? Um, and then see what happens when we get to the, the level of the city manager and then when we engage, um, in, um, in the conversation with, uh, city council ultimately in May and June.
Is it, is it worth saying, I think in this process that one of the steps that I know I've had board members in the short number of years I've been here come back after the fact and wonder about is what comes after this? You complete your budget, you identify what your approved budget is and we push that forward to the city manager. There isn't or hasn't been, at least in my years, a give and take in that process where the city manager then takes all of the chart, the three charter departments, police, fire and schools and all of general government, D P W and the non-operating side of the budget, which is debt service and, and other carrying costs. Um, and tucks all that together into a budget. I mean, our sixty million dollar budget this year against the hundred and twenty eight, twenty nine million dollar budget of the city, um, we hear some of the city managers' questions and city finance department ask questions. What's this and where did this come from? And can you back up this number and explain where you got this? Um, but ultimately, for instance, if, if our budget doesn't fit inside the city manager's need to address the council's guidance, city manager starts by making some of those adjustments. We give all the guidance we can, but ultimately that, the, the process doesn't come back and say, do you like this? Is this okay? So part of what you, what you're doing is, um, putting your best foot forward, I, you know, identifying and, and, uh, and, uh, offering cheerleaders perspective. I mean, you know, justification and enthusiasm for the things that are priorities for the board. But understand that if that is ultimately what the city council demands that they be, she will make steps to adjust to that and or they will. That's certainly all public process that you'll be able to sit and watch, but I, I know especially for new board members, it isn't, we don't come back to say, so they've asked us to find five hundred thousand. That it, it, once we hand that budget over, it's really theirs. And I think Zach's done a nice job in the past of saying it's not that they were line by line going in and saying, no, we decided city managers and say, I don't like this, get rid of it, nor does the council really. Although to the extent that there are those conversations, it would be difficult for us to go, yeah, we heard on camera that you didn't like those things, but we're going to cut something else and do this anyway. Uh, it's, I, I just tell you that by way of background because I think for me, this was meaningful because they, it's late in the process for us for sure, but it's a, it's a meaningful target based upon an assessment of economic factors and a respect for the fact that there's a property revaluation coming for the community this, this cycle. So.
And once they, sorry.
Um, no, go ahead. Okay.
So as I say, a- and now they're out, they're out publicly as a legislative body for the community saying this is what we we're trying to be responsive to taxpayers. We, um, reevaluations coming. And so they're out saying that they feel like this is a, these are response, uh, guidelines for a responsible.
I think, so the city council has, the other night they have the, the motion around this particular guidance. I guess my question is they haven't heard from this board or this body yet.
That's correct.
When they make that, when they make that decision. So I think, and I don't know if, you know, can retroactively change that sequence, but that seems to be fundamental flaw in the system, that the city council is setting up guidance without understanding where this board is on, on, on what the school district needs.
It's, I, I'll tell you, it's super challenging. Um, and it's one of, there, there's all kinds of wonderful parts of being in Portsmouth. One of the challenging aspects is this process right now, my, in a, my, a standalone district, I was done the first Tuesday in March. I dealt with the board, we came to conclusions about what we, what we felt was important, and then we had to go to the voters. You know, we were on a ballot.
Yeah.
Um, but here to go through this process, do it in depth and then be folded up into, um, another process that may or may not address some of the things we're talking about with the same depth. Could be really challenging, uh, and have, you know, I think the experience was last year. Um, have those two entities going in different directions. Uh, and I would assume based on the conversations we've had to this point, that probably being the case again this year. It, it becomes interesting. It's an interesting kind of road to walk. Now for me, the part that I've explained before is, um, I, operationally, I worry about if we're if we were to take the position of only advocacy and that we were going to push everything into the table. Um, that we, that, that we don't know if five, six, seven, eight positions are going to actually be funded. Uh, and then we get into that conversation in May and in June, and they're finalizing their conversation in June. What we'll, we'll, we will have a really difficult process in the spring when we want to hire people, get the best people, hold on to those people. We might have to hedge and be like, we can't hire certain things yet until we have clarity from, um, from, and we're going to be like, because we don't want to be out there and hired folks that we're not in a position to pay, um, as a result of what's going on. So that will be interesting. And so that's one of the reasons why, you know, I want to be thoughtful about what how do we express the will of the board and then simultaneously try to be really thoughtful about what we think we can make the case to get through at the city council. So.
Um, I do, I want to add one more thing just on the slide. Um, I think there's, and maybe this is nitpicking a little bit, but I think there is semantic nuance between set Biden guide, but it guidance between three and a half, four percent and clear expectations that no F T E. I think like there seems to be semantic nuance there. Particularly in terms of like where are, where the, the current proposal is around knowing F T Es. Yes, the guidance that we're, or the sort of we're, we're pushing is over that four and a half. But I think, I mean, my personal take would be to push the, in, in that gap between those, those two things there. This is how I would potentially approach that.
So like, just to be fair.
Yeah.
My words.
Your words. Okay.
Just, I mean, I, my words based on watching the conversation last night.
Okay.
And, and the language that was repeated, because I haven't seen the minutes yet, but that excerpt is literally taken, lifted from the agenda of last night's meeting. So that was the sample motion that was read off by councillor Taber in this case. So the language above, just because it's important that I, I don't speak for the council, the language above is how I, how I, uh, summarized and restated.
And the, and the motion that was passed was setting, was essentially setting an expectation. I mean, there was, um,
Right, because they make their decisions in June.
In June.
Yep, correct.
And, and I think the, the mayor at the end of the, the, um, the end of the discussion of the motion did say, this is, this is our guidance. But we still have to go through the process of having conversations, engaging our citizenry and coming to conclusions about what we ultimately think is the best. And I think acknowledges like, we're setting this in a vacuum.
Yeah.
Right now. And now, and then we're going to have to engage all these other stakeholders, both the, the people who work for us, who are going to try to give us advice about what, what do you, what do you, uh, what do we need in order to accomplish the goals you're setting for us? And then citizenry as a whole. Um, so he did, you know, allude to, this is great. Having guidance is great, but guidance is guidance and that doesn't mean it couldn't change. So.
And we all have to remember the city manager's recommendation was two point nine six percent, correct?
Correct.
So now we're up to three point five to four point five percent.
Right.
Yeah, so that's a, that's a plus. I mean, we may want to go higher, but that's.
So, so let us shoot, I'm sorry, I didn't even cut.
Okay, I'm done.
Um, so, so we have five different like kind of ideas for you to think about. Um, so proposal one of five would be the thing that we had already offered you. Um, which is the, you know, we, this would, um, the aster positions would not be refunded. We'd be giving up those, those astral rolls. Um, we would, um, have that very slight, basically a net neutral um, on, uh, the number of, uh, positions, uh, that we have available, but, and we would be up five point three nine percent over what the council had, uh, suggested, uh, but would hit the mark on the, um, headcount. Uh, two, um, this came out of last night. So we're going to try to meet the city council's, uh, guidance of a four point five, uh, percent max. Uh, we would, you know, have to cut about, you know, a little over a half a million dollars from the, from proposal one. Um, we, most of our, you know, uh, eighty three percent, eighty, over eighty percent of what we do is people. Uh, so that those types of decreases will come from people, not from shaving off, you know, uh, supplies. Um, the, uh, roughly, this equates to about for, uh, depending on what the positions are, um, about four professional positions. So teachers, guidance counselors, people of that realms, um, certified staff. Um, uh, that would be, uh, depending on what the positions were, something in that ballpark. Um, we'd still, we would be at, uh, four and a half in terms of, uh, hitting that, uh, and we would still be up, um, but, uh, and up, you know, two point seven million is still a large increase in what we were spending from last year, but, but we would, uh, be with four additional positions. with four additional positions. So if we combined that stuff, we'd be down, you know, nine positions uh, between Esser and the local budget. Uh, proposal three uh, would be, uh, would be go back to proposal one, and then saying we, what we want to add to make sure that we have this option. Uh, the uh, money necessary to take care of D'Addaro mobile classrooms um, for modular classrooms, um, for um, the upcoming year. Um, and we would build in, um, build in those costs that would take us up to five point five uh, and would include the ability to go up to two, up to two classrooms. Oop, proposal four uh, would speak to some of what we were talking about tonight. Uh, we would go with the, all the stuff from proposal one. Uh, add the, the money to assure that we had the, the ability to to add uh, portables at D'Addaro if we wanted to, and then add a, the um, add a school psychologist. Uh, and I think as we mentioned before, we have, we know whether it's in the near future. We we already, uh, we're already worried about caseloads uh, with psychologists already. Uh, and um, we think we're gonna lose some additional uh, capacity. Uh, we're, we're not necessarily able to meet need now. Don't worry about losing capacity as we have some turnover in staff and we'll lose the ability to have uh, interns. And then proposal five um, would be to sure up some things that are um, in grant-funded areas and move and create some financial stability for some of these positions. So we would move a special ed teacher over from the IDA grant over into um, into the local budget. We would increase um, the nurse at uh, high schools. We would have two full-time nurses at the high school. But part of the expectation of that increase would be the ability to use the um, to use some of that additional uh, position as a flex substitute at some of the other buildings when we were, when we were strained um, for the other nurses. Um, we would move, uh, we have a math specialist at uh, New Franklin, we'd start to transition that person out of the Title I grant uh, and into um, and into the local budget. And then we would uh, be adding a uh, maintenance supervisor uh, position. Uh, we, for a long time, we we know that the load that Kenny Lynchy is carrying in maintenance facilities, um, that whole umbrella uh, is really bigger than one person should be carrying over the long term. We've had Ken in here, he's doing Ken's doing everything from bid specs on, you know, projects that are tens of millions of dollars to substituting at D'Addaro to to do hallways right now.
Hallways.
I mean, he's all over the place. And when, and when um, and when we're doing pl- plowing on um, on snow days, it's Ken out there with the crew at three in the morning to do uh, to do stuff. He is, he's got his hands on a lot of different pies, and there's a, there's a need to um, to to create some additional work around managing that whole umbrella. Um, that's.
If I could jump in.
Go.
Part, one of the things that happened last night as well in the city council conversation was uh, a request for a report back made by councillor Cook asking for a report back on um, costs of poli- possibilities for laying um, conduit and cable, paraphrasing because it was a quick conversation, but uh, under the pavement that we're repaving at Portsmouth High School, we'll lay in conduit and cable for uh, EV chargers. It's a great, it's a, it's a great project, but now that has to be woven in its engineering costs, its planning costs if we do that. And even if we don't end up doing it, which I'm not proposing we don't, but even if we don't, the request right now is identify the how and the what and what cost. And the other was putting up canopies with solar arrays or a canopy with solar array over the high school parking lot as we pave. So as we pave, we erect it. It it's a pretty big parking lot, so I'm not sure how much of a canopy or how many canopies we're talking about, but but it was unclear as we walked away last night, is that something that Public Works and their engineering staff are going to assess and report back on? Or is Kenny going to report back on that, which is, he's already done a lot of the legwork to prep us for a bid going out to assess the needs of traffic flow, pedestrian safety, and you know, handling the paving project in general over the course of three or four phased years. This is just one more element and, and it it, it reinforced for me last night, wow, this really is this is big, because he also supervises all the custodians through the custodial supervisor or, you know, organizational chart, but it's more and more of that we'd like to do. I'd like to be talking with the bus company and looking at electric buses. I'd like to be looking at chargers at the high school. I mean, this, these are great things, but I need my partner in crime to be able to pull away from some of the day-to-day duties that he's got to be more managerial or or administrative in that role, and putting somebody between him and some of the day-to-day. Um, today, we had water leak. And so he was over there. I mean, the guys got started on it. We got great people working with him, but he's over there sticking his head in the hole, trying to figure out where the leak is, because then he's got to contact the the vendors that are gonna come in to do the repairs and it it'd be nice to have somebody that could free him up from some of that so that he could stay the course on some of the bigger projects that we'd like to see him moving for the school department and the community. So, thanks.
Uh, so this is just kind of the breakdown on on FT, what each of these would mean around FT means, what these would mean around uh, percentage increases. Um, you know, like, number two would be the, would be the one that would meet that guidance uh, laid out by city council last night. Um, the others uh, would not. Uh, and then you have the um, you have the FTEs. Uh, the FTE change. So, you know, one and three uh, would effectively also hit the, at least the no new headcount without offsets um, recommendation, um, but wouldn't, wouldn't make it on the the percentage increases. So, um. So.
You're gonna send us all these?
Yes, yep, yep. And and a lot of this was put together in, right on the heels of last night. We were so, so we weren't positioned to get it out to in advance.
Thank you. This is very digestible and like really helpful in terms of way of framing how how I, at least I'm thinking about um, sort of high level, how we can think about some problems. I really appreciate it.
But do we have any questions from board members?
Um, I just wondered as you were talking about the facilities needs, if if any of that, does any of that ever get contracted out, or do we simply rely on the people we have?
No, I I mean, I think a lot of it, so I, well, no, let me back up. No, what I was talking about Kenny's doing. So that doesn't really, although to be fair, Kenny's not the architect or the engineer, so for instance, we're doing the window project at D'Addaro. We've been working with um, Benwell Architects out of Lebanon, and they've done the design work. Um, matter of fact, we uh, as we put together bid specs for a project like that, Kenny takes former, former projects, previous projects whose language has already been vetted through legal, twists it and tweaks it to match the back, the back work that we get, the, you know, the back pages come from the architect in this case. He helps on the cover, sends it to me, I do a review, I'm editing it as much for grammar and format as I am for content. I say humbly, and um, and then that kicks up to legal, who hopefully can do a quicker review because they've already seen this once before in a previous, you know, iteration. Um, so Kenny's doing that. But we certainly lean into some contracted architectural engineering. But for instance, if it took some architectural engineering support to figure out what the cost might be to handle this, this report back to council, that's, I don't have that money budgeted, that's, we have the luxury of having a lot of capital dollars year over year to do the things that we have to do for our schools, which is a slog in the places where we've come from, where you have to fight that, and you go to the ballot and you're looking for a vote of thousands of people, many of whom, most of whom, nearly all of whom, never came out, don't have any idea, and simply wait till that one last day when they look at a dollar amount. In this case, we've got nine very involved and committed folks who become very much aware of these things, and we have a regular cycle that brings us capital dollars. So I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna complain about that process, but um, those dollars are earmarked. It's not easy for us to redirect dollars, and so um, we we, we would have to contract out for some of that. But we don't contract out for, like, supervision of the stuff that Kenny's doing right now in terms of custodial and maintenance. Um, obviously, there's a limit to how much our maintenance team, we've got four guys working for Kenny. So they started cutting holes, and we have some, some plumbing and electrical skill sets there, but we have contractors for plumbing and HVAC and electric who always jump in to do the lion's share of the work. And what sometimes happens is, we have guys who can work with one of them. So you can send one electrician, and I got a person who can be with him to help a second set of hands. Um, but they're seeing maintenance folks also line the fields for the athletic complex, they're in the plow trucks with Kenny doing the snow and the sanding. Um, and they have their own um, lawn mowing duties all through the, the growing season, all through the summer months. They each have a machine and go in different directions to do all of the school properties. Um, so it's a, the high-end stuff um, Kenny will always want to be connected to. We would just like to be able, and again, this may or may not be the cycle, but Kenny, we've been talking about this and growing it. Um, we want to just move ourselves in a direction where he can, he can keep his attention focused on some of the bigger, the bigger projects and the greater needs, where his nearly thirty years of experience in this community and these buildings, and he's a native son, graduate of Portsmouth High, and been with us essentially his whole career. He he's never stopped going to school and growing himself and improving himself, but he also knows where the tulip forests are and how many nails are in that one, because he was here when we laid it initially. So it's a huge resource to have right now to be able to pull him away from sweeping and taking out the trash at D'Addaro tonight, um, because we're down a person. Um, and put him instead back in his chair where he's able to use some of those resources and experiences, I mean, to be able to judge stuff as it comes by him.
And I would just say that him filling in tonight to do is, is a pretty unique.
It's an exception.
It's a unique situation, but but it, but it just goes to show, you know, that he is up and down vertically in the whole kind of operations and and uh, you know, I think we just want to be thoughtful to what you said. I want him, I would love to be in a position to have him spending more of his time on million-dollar projects.
Yeah.
Than uh, than having to equally split that with plowing. Uh, you know, so.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, sort of more of the custodial level work, but in terms of contracting out. But it sounds like this is a, maybe not, not a common situation anyways.
It's.
I would have to fill in for that.
So, no, I will tell you right now, D'Addaro has a unique situation that we've just had a, a turn in the D'Addaro staff. And he's working on hiring and and transitioning and then this training.
Hopefully that will be resolved.
That'll be, that'll resolve itself pretty quick, but in the meantime, it's all hands on deck. So custodians are moving from other buildings to cover ours, and Kenny and his maintenance crew, they're all taking turns. And uh, a- and and the truth is, if Kenny were here, he would probably say, it's not a bad thing once in a while to touch that and make sure that I I still know and the tools are what I expect the tools to be, and everything that I laid in place ten years ago is still in effect now. So I think he appreciates being able to be granular with some elements of the work. Um, but I just know that his, his unique perspective and knowledge of our buildings and our past makes him just a powerful resource when you start talking about doing things where you might be thinking outside the box. So, if I'd like to see us do more of.
Um, I think we have Tish that wants to ask a question.
Yep, hi. Um, first of all, thank you for this breakdown. It is extremely helpful. Um, and I, I, and I'm just looking at it, and um, I just the thought of, I mean, we're sitting here talking about how we need more um, more staff members to um, fulfill the needs of all the schools and the kids and all that. And you you know, the number two option, just it, it it really hits hard thinking that to hit that four point five, we would have to lose four um, staff members. It, that to me seems like an impossibility. Um, especially where the needs of of staffing, we just keep talking about how much we need, you know, an increase in in nurses in the high school. We need more maintenance. Um, I I just wanted to comment that I I just, I don't know how we could possibly lose four staff members. Um, I guess mine is not a question, but more just a comment.
And I'll just amplify, and I think Brian did a good job the first night of talking about this. So two wouldn't really actually be, when you think about it, it would be, it wouldn't just be losing four staff members. We really would have you know, uh, nine, nine to ten people who work with us at this moment would not work with us at the next school year, because we have the Esser positions too that would be part of that. Um, so that's a big, that's a big, that's a big jump. That's a lot of people at the same time. Uh, and uh, so I share your concern that that would, that uh, that I worry about our ability to absorb, absorb that type of hit in a single year in a way that's not gonna have really challenging outcomes for kids. I also.
Yeah, the, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Because, and then but part of the reason we put it in here too is we also want to be, you know, thoughtful and respectful of the city council and and making sure you understood what that was and providing that as an option.
Oh, absolutely. And I, and I fully appreciate that and me being a numbers person. Um, this is, it's laid out so well, but it it just, I just look at that, and you're right, I wasn't even thinking of the um, Esser positions we're losing as well. Um, I I just don't know how that's even a possibility and to give the the school and the students what they, what they need, what they deserve.
Thank you. Yes, I have Lee and then Brian.
Yeah, so I as well really appreciate the way that you guys have put this together. Um, I think I'm having heartburn right now. Um, and and maybe this is, you know, really for a question for you, Nathan, which is you know, based on previous experience and the years that you've been here and engagement with city council and city manager. Like, what would your guidance be? Like, where would you end up? You know, really wanting us to go, because I am, I'm struggling from the same perspective of, hey, I'm, I'm okay with one. Like, with option one here, if that's really where we have to be, I'm not okay with, you know, with losing nine positions. I'm not, I'm just not okay with it. I can't be. I think the other thing, though, is I need to be, and and we as a group need to be respectful of the guidance that was provided as well, and for us to turn around and say, okay, we're gonna go with option four, five here is, you know, probably not in the wrong things as well. And and making that statement with a guest that, hey, when city manager looks at the number we hand her, she's, she doesn't know what she's really chopping, she's just going, I'm, oh, I shouldn't say that. She does probably know what she's really chopping, but at the same time, she's just going, yeah, it's gotta be this number at the end of the day.
So I I, I don't want to keep you all late, and I love to talk, but I, I want to tell you that, I mean, Zach and I've had this ongoing conversation. We hinted at it in a couple of ways in previous meetings. Um, we both, I think, Patty as well, and I know where Rick came, just came from, we've come from, we've come from school districts and communities where we are traditionally sitting here at this point in the process, talking about what would be the first cut you would consider or accept, what would be the next cut? And here in Portsmouth, we have the luxury of talking about what would be the first add-back. What is it that you would or wouldn't add, depending on where we wanted to go? And so I, I appreciate the opportunity to work in an environment like this, because you can imagine that from your, from a financial perspective, it's not easy. It's actually, it's got its own challenges, but it is a lot less gut-wrenching to work in this direction.
You want heartburn? You go with that one. It's like, we, they, when we're talking, having this conversation with you and the, and people are like, well, I think we could cut twelve positions. Couldn't we get by with twelve, twelve cuts, right? We've all been in those environments. And that's not, and we're very, we feel great, very grateful to be in an environment where that's not the conversation we're in.
But so in answer to your question, I immediately go to, I mean, I've said this a couple of times, Zach, look, I can take number one, and I can do something. And I'll go in and I'll ferret out a little here and a little there, and I'll squeeze five or ten grand out of every one of the buildings, and they, they'll miss it, but they won't miss it, and I'll apologize, and we'll figure it out, and we'll find a way. And I, and I gotta stop doing that, this find a way, like there's a magical pot somewhere under my desk, and there really isn't. It's just they make choices, we all make choices over the course of the year to tackle challenges that are, become higher priorities than we might have thought, and other things wait and 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 so it's my inclination right through this process has been, I need to do more, because I need to give you some savings. I need to get, especially after last night, I I went back to my desk, and I was trying to figure out where I'm gonna recommend. If I had it, if I, if I had to choose, and you asked the question quite that way, I would say we didn't know when we brought you the current proposal, that we were as, that we were really trending in the direction of the modular classroom for D'Addaro. And so what I have been saying internally or externally is, we'll have to find that, we'll have to figure that out. So some of the setup costs, I'll have to get Kenny to eat that out of June. So he's had to save a few bucks and do it now to get those costs if we decide to go there. I also know, if we decide as we march towards May and June, when the council starts to consider this budget, if we've made the decision at that point, we're not gonna do a modular, then we could cut the money that we had asked for for the modular. We could volunteer that and just say, hey, we put money in, we're not gonna do it. Because we made the decision now, a decision we couldn't make second or third week of February, but now in May, we have, we've done the homework. So I, I feel like I should say out loud, the ninety thousand-ish that I added in for the modular, which is first year rent, carrying costs and all the setup, connecting everything to it, putting the ramp in, and everything Kenny's gonna do. I should have had that in the budget. It probably should be it now, because. I should have had that in the budget, it probably should be it now because if we go there, I really should have it, and it's enough of a. Enough of a a pill to swallow that it would be hard to just say, oh, we've got it hidden somewhere, we don't really, you know, we'd have to make sacrifices. And so I I feel like number three is really what I should advocate for, although. I like four and five years, I like the things we've just listed, right, you just heard me, but I think three probably, three feels better in terms of the content than one. And then I guess if I go one step further, I'll say, if you woo forward with a a one or a three, what I expect comes next. Is you've met the threshold or you've met the test of headcount not changing. The city manager and finance director will come back to me in the first week or two or three, they'll talk to Zach and me and Patty and. We'll sit down and they'll say, what are you gonna do? Actually, it'll start with, you gotta do better by about this much. And then we'll talk about, and some of that will be, I will tell you that it non, non salary operating portion of the budget. Is up by a chunk, three hundred and something thousand dollars, because every year for four years running. We've, we've, well, we took an initial cut and then we, every year we try to put it back to give everybody the operating stuff they used to have. And every year we keep a little bit of it, but most of it we have to cut again. So I, one of the things that I can do to get us, it won't get us all the way to four to half, but one of the things that we could do to Walmart price and get it under five. I'll have to go back and shave operating lines again. You haven't heard them come and complain a lot because they're just, you know, we have a decent budget and even if we shave a little bit here and there, everybody will be okay, so. I expect that that's what would happen next, I don't know that we would, I don't know that we could get to four point five that way. But we might drop five point three nine by a little bit, and that may be enough, whatever we settle on with the manager may be enough for the manager to. Build that in with everything else under the umbrella and target and hit the targets that she needs to hit, that's.
Well, and I think it's powerful for us to come to the table and to be able to say. We get the headcount. Like we've already, we've already, we've already done some hard work that may or may not happen in other departments. Uh, and we're coming to the table, we're coming to the table with five positions, we're five positions down as we're walking in the room. And I don't think that's something that other departments are going to be able to say as well, so if our case is. We're five positions down, um, you know, we'll lose five positions, we're we're a net neutral on the um, on the. In local FTEs. And yeah, we're over, but most of that overage is is contracts. That that we approved and the city council approved. Uh, and that going to, going to nine positions or ten positions. In one year is just not a reasonable thing to do in terms of what the impact's gonna have on our operations and our kids. I think that's a very, that's a powerful state thing to to make. So um, and at the same time, you know, we also, we're, we work really closely with the city manager and I think we. We work really hard to be good partners in in what we're doing. And so that will be a hard conversation too if we're coming in with that. You know, with that, but I do think it's gonna be strong to be able to say, we've already given. Um, with those, those five that would be coming out of Esser. And we had, and Nancy will be the first ones to remind you, we have told them, we told them last year, we told them, and before I got here, you told them the year before. We want those positions out of Esser because we don't want to be in a position where like this, where we're, we're looking at, you know, large scale. Large scale reductions in staffing.
And they promised to fund those after Esther, after Esther, after Esser was over. They, yeah, city council casually promised to fund those positions after Esser was. We have to remind them of that too.
Is that, that we could keep those? In as current FTEs, I guess that's what I keep going back to is, I know technically they're not, but. They are, at the same time, they're serving our schools in that way.
So, I mean, well, they'll, for their purposes, they're interested in the 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 headcount. Funded by the local budget, so when they say headcount, they're talking about headcount of local budget, so they would, they wouldn't give us the. We tried the. Shazam, uh, it's, these are all this, but we will definitely be, we'll be talking to.
To clarify that it is a reduction in our services.
Oh, no, absolutely, that goes back to, I thought, like that first night, Brian did a great job after the city manager had come to see us, that we're not, we're not, we're not talking like the five. Reductions or some assumed thing, and now we're gonna have the real conversations, like no, there are five people. Who work for us right now that will not, that will um potentially not be working for us. Uh, that's where we're starting, we're starting at five people down, uh, and. And that, again, that has real impact, so.
Brian.
Yeah, I was kind of gonna say what Pip said, um, but uh, I I do think we, instead of calling it a symbolic. Sort of flatness, I do think you need to harp on the fact that it is less of a headcount.
Yeah.
And we should, whatever, whatever you present, has to be on there of like, out of the gate, well, you know, down five positions, this is down whatever. Because I think that's the only way to hit home of like, you know, that is a true reduction in services. Um, and I do appreciate that these are in the district's priority.
Yep.
Of order, because that helps everybody make a decision. Um, I just wish one and two are switched, but just, I know because one was sort of the first one.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
But um, you know, in terms of priority, but um, yeah, I think just really harping on the fact that. You know, um, maybe just even another column uh would be with up with those additional actions.
Yeah, I agree, I mean, I I and I think the. You know, we've had some ongoing conversations as we go, as we've started to develop things. Uh, with uh the municipal side of the equation. Um, we're starting to get some, some city council member reach outs to try to understand better what's in our budgets. So we're starting to respond to some of those things, I I don't know to what extent. There's, in fact, I'm pretty sure there is not a deep understanding of the fact that we would be five people down before we walked in the room in that if. Under certain circumstances, if we had, like for the managers to point, let's say, and I understand where it came from, the inflationary line. We could have been talking, and Nancy was right then, we could have been talking twelve to fifteen positions in order to hit that, I don't think that that was. Fully understood, go to go back to Byron's point, you know, about like what, what do they know or not know?
They're making the motion.
When they're making the motion and they're, and what's, you know, and how, so what extent is that motion uh? It's a um, a calculus driven primarily by. Um, concern for constituents who are telling them you're, 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 you're spending too much and it's influencing my taxes a lot. And that's what they have right now, they don't have anything to weigh that against yet, so that could be dynamic as we get into that, giving them that opportunity.
I think we have Lisa.
Lisa, I don't want to repeat what others have said, but I would just echo that. I am deeply uncomfortable even with proposal one, because we really did not intend to move those positions in Tassar, so I. Agree, we really do need to stress with the council that we did have. At least an informal understanding last year that we were not gonna lose these jobs when the grant ended. So I do feel like we need to stress that that is an FTE reduction to get rid of those positions. I feel like. I, to me, something like proposal three, if we think we're gonna need the modular classroom is the minimum of where we should push. Just because I don't want to see us have to have that classroom, have no budget for it, and then be in a position of looking at what other jobs we have to shuffle around. To make space for kids who need space, and I'm also not sure how we put teachers in that classroom if we haven't at least got the building, the budget. So I would just leave it there, but I definitely see this as not a neutral budget.
One, one thing I want to make sure it's really clear, I know when I came in, just in terms of my experience of the engagement with the council. We went through a couple of waves last year in in um, the spring. The, any promises that were made to uh add people in might have happened the year before I got here. I think there might have been, because it wasn't, there were no promises made. To me last year, because I wanted me, I like, I, because I want to make sure really clear, we told them repeatedly. If you decide to do this, our, our board wanted to put, wants to put all these things into the local budget, if you decide to do this. Asser will come to a close, we will, you will be putting yourself in a position where you're gonna hit a cliff. Um, and we think that the more appropriate way would be to step down a little bit, if you, if you want to move there eventually, take a couple of positions. Keep a couple in, do a step down process, if you think in the long run, we need to make some adjustments or give us the positions, but if you. Can't remember, we didn't exactly say, if you take the candy now, then you're gonna be paying uh next year, but we just kept emphasizing. Cliff, Esther Cliff, I think I, I think I probably said Esther Cliff over three meetings ten times. Um, and and just said, we will, you know, we will be in a really um. Uh, difficult situation come a year from now, if this is a decision, ultimately they decided to push all those things back and uh ask us, push all those. Not fund us for those positions locally, uh therefore we had to push them all back into Esser, uh and that's now here we are. So um, so I think it's a fair, a fair criticism from the board and fair thing for us to advocate about, but I I don't think there was a pro, do you feel like there was a promise?
Well, no, but I do want to clarify, because I, I want to be fair to the council every cycle, every chance I can, they let us move to, to it.
That's true.
Two of the positions that we had asked to keep. Two of the position we asked to move to the district, local budget, they allowed us to, but the rest of them, they had to save. And I, I would, I guess I would say, I don't know that in that process, they were. That process isn't them necessarily having to make promises, it was them making a decision and the decision was, you can have two. So we made clear, there's a cliff coming and the, the rest of these are gonna have to be dealt with. And I, I don't think there's, none of them would doubt that, but you're right, I don't know that. I couldn't go back and find roll tape and tell you to say, and at that point, so and so said, I make a motion that we promised them, and if they help, you know what I mean, that. The, the, the situation was, here's the facts. They knew that we had walked through multiple proposals here about keeping this, not keeping this, asking for this pushing, and when you folks made the ultimate decision that. Rather than wait for a cliff, we should ask to move them all, that's what we took them and they, they allowed to, so. They knew, they knew that what was coming next.
Yeah, I, I think that's fair, Nathan, I would say what we presented was to keep those in the local budget and what came back was moving many of them back to. Esser, I think that's a fair characterization.
Do you think, though, that they, they asked us to do that knowing that we could fund them still? So, you know, they had the knowledge that there was a way to make it work without having it in their budget, so. That, I mean, I think that adds just a little bit of nuance.
And it goes back, again, it goes back to what Byron was saying, it goes back to what the mayor was saying at the end of that conversation last night, there's, we can lay out guidance. We still have to have a conversation with uh with our staff and with people in the community about what we want to do, so.
Didn't you say that you thought the city might fund the modules at Don Darrow if we needed to have them?
We did, um, but we're, I think for me, similar to what, I can remember was just Lisa or Pip said this and. I I just want to know that that, if that is something that is a possibility, and I think it is, it is better than, it's, it's at least a coin flip. But that's gonna be something we might need to do, I don't want to have to. Cannibalize on the fly something else in the budget. If, if I think that's a, that's a.
We can give the ninety grand back if we have to.
Yeah, and if we, and if we have to, we can, in, in, like we said, in May and June, say, here you go, take it back. Um, but I'd like to know that we have, uh, we have a plan to be able to do that if we want to execute.
The very understandable response from the city was, if you know, of course, remember, their budget process is starting now, ours started in October, so. Their perspective is, if you know about this now, it should be in your budget, because the alternative is us asking them. To make sacrifices somewhere on the city side to shift money around for this, there isn't any ready fund to just tap for this. So because you know it now, it should be in your budget.
Did you ever use the strategy that um, we don't realize we need it until July, so we ask for a supplemental budget?
So again, if I go back to where we've all come from, the first night that Assistant Mayor Splain said, why don't you take that? And if you decide, if you figure out you need more, then just go back and ask us for more, and I thought. That's how business administrators in the rest of the world lose their jobs, they don't, they don't have enough and they come back for more. Here, I understand the supplemental is a mechanism that works and I've watched the council do it a couple of times and. And so it, it's, it's real here, again, out in the rest of the world, I'd have to put that on a special meeting ballot, I'd have to get the. The superior court to say we could have the meeting, and then they'd spend the entire night giving me ugly glares that I was the guy who screwed up the numbers, so. But you're right, we could, we could, yeah, it is an option here in Portsmouth.
Uh, Pip, did you have something?
Yeah, I just, um, one thing that that stood out to me um, in the binder. Uh, was the health insurance stabilization reserve.
Yes.
Um, and the fact that we are paying back two percent of that, that to the reserve. Is there any reason that we, that we couldn't pay back one percent this year instead? And save a little bit.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a great.
Is that something we've elected to do, or is that something we're being required?
Semi-election, uh, because we're, we're, so, well, sometimes it's better to suggest yourself as opposed to be told what it's gonna be. So um, uh, and I think Nathan described it in his narrative, I mean, we're, we're basically, we're behind on our, on our contribution to the overall city. Kind of thing, and we have been, um, and so there's been this desire to like, how are we going to make up for the fact the school's basically been. You know, internal borrowing, all this off, so um, so we talked after the last cycle, because there was some conversation about wanting. Us, it was light, about wanting us to start doing it last cycle.
Right.
Uh, and that was like, so we had finished our dialogue here. We rolled out, you guys had, we, we had the proposal we were bringing forward for, for you guys, and then there was some conversation on the city side about. Well, that's great what you guys are doing, but we also want, blankety-blank, I can't remember what the percentage was, we started throwing around percentages to pay back the fund last year, like, whoa. We really, we're, we are ready to be good, you know, good doobies and find a way to do this. But um, can we, we need more time and can we spread it out over multiple years, so that's where it came from, so. This has not been dictated to us so far, I think that we've had some conversations on the side with city finance about what do people think would be an acceptable amount for us to start. The trajectory of paying back, um, but at this point, this is semi elective, I would say.
And I, and I would go one step further and say that this is a, this is a financial policy in place on the city side. And so I think that ultimately, the final review. For the longer term, like right now, we're anticipating, continue to use the ten year rolling average of rate increase and add a two percent surcharge and do so in each year for. What could be ten plus years to right sizes to the point where we are contributing. An amount that's equal to what we're spending each year, so that the fund doesn't continue to go into deficit in our position. And then begin to pay back the deficit that exists from previous years. That will eventually, I think, be incorporated in financial policy of the, of the council. And they will set that, because right now, there's nothing in that policy that dictates this two percent surcharge. It's something that we've arrived at by doing some analysis about how long it's gonna reasonably take us to pay back. But I also would suggest that if what we propose to the city is not agreeable and doesn't fit for the city manager and the finance director in the budget. They're certainly at liberty to say, well, that extra percent or two, we could take that out right now and reduce your budget, reduces all of our budgets, it simply. Doesn't contribute to restoring funds that, that, that revolving or that stabilization fund are waiting for, is waiting for.
Now, it's my understanding that we cannot touch that, in all my years of being involved. That is stipulation, the state stabilization funds are set and every department contributes so much every year and you can't fiddle with that. That's just my understanding. I could, you know, maybe it's, maybe, maybe it could be worth a.
I, I think we can't under, we couldn't purposely undercut.
I couldn't undercut it, but I.
But what ended up is what, what the set percentages that were there weren't covering.
Right, so. I mean, I, again, in a, in a nutshell, what happened was, over a period of time. My, my, my analysis of it is, over a period of time, we continued to. Change our annual appropriation to, to contribute to the revolving fund. By the ten year rolling average of rate change, what we did not do was ever actualize or adjust for new bodies and new elections, so as people. As people got married and added a single, became a two person or had children, they became a family. This was all on the law of averages, we weren't actually, but more importantly, when we added three positions and they each picked up a family plan. Nobody said, now our annual allotment, our annual appropriation has to go up for three more bodies, and when three more family plans are twenty five thousand apiece. That's seventy five grand, and if you do that for a decade, you started to add, they never right sized it because total compensation has always been. When we talk about the total cost of a body, we talk about salary, retirement and taxes, not health and dental. Now we're talking about health and dental, and in the budget you'll see under cost center one hundred, I put in an allowance for. The new benefit of dental or health or dental that is related to a position that we're adding, or to the extent that I know. That we are bringing a position from a grant, for instance, and it's bringing its health and dental, now it's a new expense, even if I let go of somebody who wasn't. I, I try to always play on the air on the side of add to the health budget because I'm behind, so I, I don't. I, I don't, I, I don't, I don't play on opportunity to not add to it, but I always take the opportunity to add to it because I know that I'm in arrears in the first place, so. And that's something the city finance knows about, we've talked about it and that's. That'll move us in the right direction over. That'll move us in the right direction over time, that's a great, I'm glad. Unless somebody read this.
Have any other ideas? Any other questions? I, I, we, we see those, which plan has those five Esser positions in it, do any of those?
None.
None, okay. Are there any of those Esser positions that you feel we really need? I know we talked about the math tutor at the high school as a possibility of not being there anymore.
So, right, right now, we wouldn't trade out. Any of those, we wouldn't trade out for the other positions that are in the proposal. Any of the Esser positions for those, for other things, so if we needed to do a trade, we would do it, and then if we were gonna go further, we're gonna go deeper. You know, would be school psych, and then the next tier would be the addition of these things. That's where, in terms of what we think's gonna move us forward, that's where.
Now, just to, if we took out the maintenance supervisor and the nurse, the point four nurse, could we add in a, another one of those Esser positions that we really think we need?
Um, you could, you can do a lot of things, I would say, we, we wouldn't, we would say you need these things more than you need anything that's in the Esser positions.
Okay, that's what the information I'd be looking for then is what is your, you know, what is more important to our administration?
That's why he, he put these together and Nancy is to really. You know, telegraph, these are the priority positions for the districts.
Okay, well, I guess for, for our next meeting, next Tuesday, which is a regular board meeting. Are we gonna have any time in that meeting to talk about budget, would you say?
I, we could, it's just a matter of how we wanna, I, I think, yes, we could structure it to make sure we had some time to talk budget, it's just a matter of what, what. Uh, we have the thirteenth and we have the, we have the twentieth if, if need be. Um, and so we could definitely build in time inside of that agenda, make sure that we're spending time on the budget.
Or should we just wait until the twentieth and consider those proposals and vote on our budget?
So, my concern is that there's sufficient conversation that happens and, and doesn't have to be lengthy, I just. Don't arrive at the twentieth without all of the data you think you need to make a final decision, as long as it's with us. And you, you wanna deliberate, that's great, but use the thirteenth to identify anything else you think you want to know that isn't somewhere in your. In your reach right now, because what you don't wanna have happen, we really can't afford to have happen, is you get to the twentieth and you have three more questions and we don't have any answers. Uh, and then you're trying to make a decision and feeling underinformed.
I was gonna say, cause you're trying to vote a final number.
I need a final number on the twentieth, yeah.
No, it was the twentieth, so I, I would say we should, I mean, really should be shooting for an extremely robust conversation on the thirteenth. That gets us just about there, if not there. Um, that leaves us the ability, if we have to do some last minute kind of calculating, I mean, really, hopefully the big. Kind of big conceptual, uh, decisions have been made coming out of the thirteenth. And then we can go away to turn that into a, a real number. And then come back to the twentieth to have some final cleanup conversations and vote a real number, I think, I think that's.
Yeah, and the agenda that's, the agenda you'll see for the thirteenth, it considers the opportunity to approve the budget. Now that, that, that's to, that's to allow you the opportunity, if you arrive at that, in that moment, to be able to do so. As opposed to not being able to, cause it wasn't, uh, noticed in the agenda. You certainly, we certainly, certainly can still come back for the twentieth, but at least twice in my five years that we voted it that night. Because questions have been answered and you get to a point where you're tired and you, you choose not to do another night on it, but. Um, so that's what the agenda says right now is drafted.
Thirteenth is also a public hearing, correct?
We reopen for the public to come back in and give whatever other feedback they've got, yes.
Okay, so if anyone has any questions, like Pip, Pip just had the question about the stabilization fund, if anybody has any. Questions that we really haven't talked about yet, need to get those to Nathan and Zach and Patty so that they can. Give us some answers to those questions, so.
We have things that will be included in the packet this time around of things that we were given previously, so we have some, some stuff around, uh, parautilization. That I, uh, I think will be in there, some stuff from Lisa, there's some questions around, um, out of district placements and services. From Lee that will be included in the packet, um, so we, at this point, I would encourage you to shoot questions at us. The sooner the better, so it gives us more lead time, but I don't know our ability. We're, we're close to being out of time on our ability to include it in the packet, but we can work. You know, work over the next several days, be in a position to be able to present some answers to some of those questions at the, at the meeting thirteen.
So. Okay, so when would you like these questions submitted to you?
Sooner the better, um, you know, clock sticking, uh, on our ability to turn things around, depending on how complex the question is, um, you know, we, uh, yeah.
And I think Paulette will probably add the slides that we just went through about the proposals, she'll put that, she, she may add it to tonight's history. But she'll add it to the next package because.
It's also public conceived.
Yeah, so the public will have it and it'll be part of your, and it'll, I think it'll be the seed for our conversation on thirteenth too, so.
So these questions should be submitted to you, two, three, by, let's say, Tuesday? When would you want them, by Thursday again, should we do the Thursday deadline?
If, uh.
At five?
Yeah, I would, I would, I, I wanna say even earlier, I mean, Thursday like midday. Uh, yeah, cause at that point it becomes really difficult, we're, we're, we've got state level meetings on Friday, there's, no, and, uh, so. Yeah, we'll, we'll. Yeah, even Thursday will mean, which is fine, we, we can work to get it done and have it together. Uh, but, uh, but yeah, obviously Thursday at noon and after that, it's very difficult for us to turn anything around.
Well, I wanna thank you, Nathan, Zach and Patty for the proposals that you put forth, they seem to really make a lot of sense and they're reasonable and, um. Did a lot of hard work for us, thank you.
Well, thank you guys for putting in the time, we appreciate it. Look forward to more questions.
Okay, anything else, anybody wants to talk about? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
But we don't take motions in public.
No, we don't actually.
Okay, does everybody wanna leave? That's a question.